...are invited to address the board. When it is your turn to speak, please come to the podium and wait to be recognized by the chair. Each individual will have three minutes and delegations will have five minutes to provide their comments. Please respect this time limitation so others may address the board. A maximum of 30 minutes will be designated for public comment this evening. Please address your comments to the board as a whole, not individual board members, the audience, or staff, and please begin by stating your name. The board requests that all speakers maintain an environment that promotes listening and respect. The board will not respond or address issues raised by speakers during the course of public comment, and speakers are reminded that the board chair is authorized to stop or remove any speaker who uses vulgar, disruptive, or threatening language. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines is greatly appreciated. Public comment period is open. Once again, public comment period is open. All right, seeing no movement, I'll bring the public comment period for this workshop to a close. Takes us to our first presentation of the evening, Dr. Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First item is the final goal of our strategic plan, our yearly update of that goal. Dr. Prince is going to give the board and community an update on Goal Four, which centers on culture and well-being. Dr. Prince?
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening to you.
As a reminder, our Goal Four of the strategic plan is culture and well-being, which is focusing on fostering a safe and positive learning environment to promote the emotional development of our students. As a part of your packet, the key performance indicators that will be a part of that is highlighted in green and mostly will come from the VDOE Climate Survey. We have seven KPOs, key performance objectives, which include collaborate with state and local agencies to ensure mental health, social, and family support services are available for students, maintain facilities that are safe and enhance learning, increase understanding of cultural competencies through expanded educational and social offerings, promote a positive inclusive culture conducive to learning in every school and for everyone, cultivate and nurture health and wellness for staff and students during and after the school day, create and implement social and emotional professional development for staff that result in higher student achievement, and ensure that students access appropriate social and emotional supports and services to support well-being and academic success. As a part of that, the exceptional education department staff members have received ongoing training certificates that have focused directly on mental health as well as strategies in working with students with mental health needs. They also receive annual training through our CSA, which has helped them to be supportive and equipped in providing family support services for students. Our lead teachers and behavior specialists are all CAN certified, and CAN's actually stands for Child and Adolescents Needs and Strengths, which is used to support decision-making that we use, which includes level of care and service planning for students, including child welfare, mental health, juvenile justice, and early intervention. Another part of the process is monthly meetings through our FAP team, which is our Family Assessment Planning Team. As a part of maintaining facilities that are safe and enhance learning, safety team reports are reviewed and division safety meetings take place quarterly. Our annual fire marshal reports take place as well as quarterly fire inspections in each building. School safety audits take place and staff members are able to report things that need to be fixed, repaired through our facilities management system, our school due process. Addressing our KPOs to promote a positive and inclusive culture conducive to learning in every school and for everyone, we review and we analyze safety team reports, discipline data, and absences as a part of our PBIS VTSS system of supports for students. This is done at the school and the division level quarterly. As a part of our health and wellness for staff and students, our HR department has sent out health and wellness emails from Commonwealth Health as well as encourage staff members to participate in our division's wellness program. Through that program, flu vaccinations have been offered as a part as well as discount membership to local gyms. Also, as a division, we have our Health and Wellness Division Committee. In order to ensure that our students are active, it is also our goal to increase extracurricular activities. At the elementary level, students are involved in the swim program. We have run teams at our elementary level, as well as golf has been added as an option. As a partner with the YMCA PYAA Special Olympics, we will also be providing more opportunities for our students with disabilities to become a part of local sports in the community. Currently, we have students at the high school that are part of our Medford League. A large focus for us this school year as a division has been centered around SEL, or Social Emotional Learning. During our convocation in October, staff members were able to participate in training opportunities, and this will continue in the spring. At the elementary level, there will be SEL curriculum introduced in February, and PMS has been using Second Steps for the last two years. Second Steps involve in showing students and teaching them being able to handle strong emotions, setting and meeting goals, making good decisions, and forging positive relationships while building safe, supportive learning environment. PHS will also be incorporating these strategies in the near future. As a part of our goal for increasing understanding of cultural competency through expanded educational and social offering, last year, the Equity and Diversity and Inclusion Committee was formed. This committee met with community members and defined what equity, diversity, and inclusion means for PCPS. As part of the training, PD opportunities have been provided, and we have equity ambassadors at each school. We've had teachers, administrators, and students present at conferences, which include VCU and Merck. Our DL 421 lessons have also incorporated educational opportunities for our students. Our final KPO is ensuring that students access appropriate social, emotional supports and services to support well-being and academic success. The school counselors, psychologists, social worker, and behavior specialists play vital role in providing supports needed to ensure student success by offering the following. In our school counseling program, they offer classroom guidance lessons, small group targeted by topics, and individual short-term counseling. Our school psychologists provide targeted small group sessions. Our behavior specialist has been here this year for staff and student supports, and our school social worker assists students and families in accessing community resources and providing targeted short-term counseling. This concludes my presentation.
Our junior members have questions for Dr. Prince.
I do.
Mrs. Sears.
How are we assured that students are accessing programs, that students that need it? How are we sure they're accessing programs, mental programs that they need? Is there any way we can be sure?
Well, we do have for our special needs students, they have case managers that are available for them as well as their classroom teachers. We also have our guidance counselors that are available and that have designated students that are part of their caseload or their management system that are K through, pre-K through 12, as a needed support, as well as our administrators that are in the building that coming, they come encounter of telephone calls from parents, letting them know of certain situations. So throughout our system, we train and we let staff members know the look-for's and the needed supports are given.
I, when we were at the annual conference, I went to a session, and it was called the Purple Lanyard, and do any of you all remember what county that was from? Anyway, I have the information on it, and every employees, community members went through a one-day training on how to help someone that was in a crisis situation. They all wore, every day, anybody that was trained wore a purple lanyard in the school and in the community, so people that were out. If a child was at the mall and saw somebody with a purple lanyard, they would know who to contact and how to help this child immediately. And I thought it was a really good program for intervention anyway, just to let people know that these were, and they had stickers on the windows of their classrooms that a child could go into that classroom knowing there was someone there that could help them. So I do have the information on it, and I will be happy to get that.
That would be great. I will say that our classroom teachers are first line of defense, and we encourage them to get to know every student in their class and to know the warning signs of students coming in that need that extra support. So I would be happy to get that information.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mrs. Sears. I brought that up a few months back. It's called the Mental Health First Aid Workshop, and I attended that along with one of my constituents. And I did bring that back to Dr. Jones, and he said he knew of the superintendent in Northern Virginia.
Was somewhere in, yeah.
Yeah, and he said that he knew him well, and that if we wanted to, we could set up a field trip or whatever. So have you had a chance to speak with him at all, Dr. Jones?
There, it's David Jekk in Falkir County. They're available if we'd like to go and learn more about it.
I think it'd be a great idea. Thank you.
All right, other questions or comments for Dr. Prince?
Sir, this is, this area is probably the most difficult to summarize and to quantify, and I appreciate our initial efforts to do that. I think, I think you've, we've laid a foundation for beginning to try to quantify what we're doing. You know, you mentioned, and Ms. Ehmel and Ms. Sears both mentioned the importance of teachers, and somehow we need to incorporate that in these, in your strategies. I don't know exactly where that goes, because I think that one-to-one relationship that they have, one-to-one relationships period is important, but teachers are the ones that see those students on a day-to-day basis, and they are a first line of help for those students, and they're the first, they're our first alert system when there's a student that we need to be concerned about health-wise or in cases that there may be, it may be safety-wise also. So somehow we need to begin to quantify, at least to mention them in the plan somewhere. As I was reading this, I also thought about, you know, where do our lunch buddies and our mentors and our watchdogs and all those folks fit in? I don't know, you know, we've had them somewhat mentioned in a community piece a minute ago, but I think they are very, very important too, and we probably need, as a part of that training we do for them, to let, to give them some basic information about how they report problems if we're not doing that already. But I appreciate what we're doing. I've gone back and tried to look in detail at your, at your, the second handout you have, the key performance indicators, and I know we're just beginning to collect data, so it'll be interesting to see how we go, how that develops over the years as we collect more data. So thank you for your, for this information.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cull. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Prince?
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mrs. Ehmel, then Mr. Conklin.
Slide four, Maintaining Facilities. I have noticed when I've been in the schools last month for the conferences and before that as well, the lack of cleanliness. I know we've talked about it before. I'm really concerned at the new middle school, being just a year old, the, I guess what's striking to me is not just that school, but the other schools I've been in last month and the month before, is the floors, the corners and against the edges there, you can just tell it's not been cleaned. And I am wondering if we need to revisit our, the outsourcing and go back to in-house custodial services because of that. I have that one, and then on slide six, the Equity and Diversity Committee. I know I mentioned this last month in my comments, but I also wanted to say again about how our county was represented well at the Merck Conference in many sessions. Dr. Prince was there in the opening board session. Dr. Parker had a session that was real well-attended, and Dr. Martin and her students and teachers spoke about the Multicultural Awareness Club. In fact, there were teachers of all levels in our district that were giving different workshops, and it just was exciting to see that we were on the leading edge, our county. So good job on that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ehmel. Dr. Jones or Dr. Prince, would either of you like to respond to either of those two comments?
We'll be happy to bring the board some more information about, report on the cleanliness in the buildings at a future month. Ms. Ehmel and I had a conversation, I shared that there was some turnover in staff at the middle school that we were aware of and that Service Solutions was working towards. I'm, I'm not aware of any complaints coming from principals about the cleanliness in their buildings. They are asked to fill out a monthly report of any issues or concerns that they have so that we can act on that and communicate with SSC, but we'll monitor that and bring back a report for the board on how that is going. We'd be happy to do that, and if the board would like to look at options, then we'd be happy to prepare some fiscal impact on what it would be like to move away from outsourcing custodial services.
Dr. Jones, if I could, I, I know part of being a principal is cleanliness of the building, but I'm happy to, you know, I know they have a lot of things to do, and I'm happy to point out corners and areas that I've seen and bathrooms. So I know it's probably not on the top of their list, because it should be.
When I say principals, it's not just principals. Staff members can also include information. So if a classroom hasn't been cleaned, or if they notice an area, there's a mechanism for them to put that in as well. So it's input from all those members. The principals are just responsible for monitoring it and making sure if they see anything that it's included.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
So you're going to bring us some information back for the January meeting with some information from the schools?
We'll look at January and see if that's enough time for us with the holidays to pull that information together, but we'll be happy to do that, the pleasure of the board.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate that. All right, Mr. Conklin, I believe you had a question or a comment, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This kind of speaks to the, you know, well-being of our students. I think that there's quite a, quite a number of students that are in need of a lot of things, you know, a lot of emotional support, and some of that, you know, goes as much as, you know, physical needs, monetary needs, clothing, shoes, school materials. The Curtis Grant, generous Curtis Grant was given, you know, in a spirit of, you know, no strings attached to help the teachers, and I think a number of teachers have turned around and are wishing to pay that forward by being able to give either, you know, clothing or items directly to students that they know that are in need of such things. And I just want to, you know, ask that the division recognize this and help facilitate that process so we don't put up roadblocks to them. So if there are any guidelines that can be communicated to, to the staff, if they want to use those funds to help, you know, directly help specific students, I would encourage that. That's my own opinion, but just asking that, you know, would we help facilitate that process and give some guidance and support to the teachers who wish to do that? That's all.
And that's an excellent point, Mr. Conklin. And we've given guidelines to all staff members about how to use Curtis Grants. We've tried to keep the spirit of the Curtis family in terms of no strings attached throughout that, but certainly there are some legal requirements that we have, auditing requirements that we had, so we wanted to make sure that was spelled out for all the staff members. And in the guidelines, it specifically says that if you would like to use this money to purchase things for your students, we give examples like coats, or shoes, or backpack, or books, or anything like that, that certainly that is an appropriate and stated objective of the Curtis family, is that it be used for that. So that's been made clear. We're monitoring any questions that we have from teachers because this is new, but we'll make sure that that's clear to them, that that is a, an opportunity for them to help students who need those areas.
Thank you, and I suspected that that was the case, and I think somehow there is some confusion, maybe it, maybe from getting that information all the way down to their level. I think some of them feel that they're questioned or second-guessed on what they, what they can and can't do. It certainly seemed like the requests fell into the spirit of what was intended for the grant, but just bear that in mind as we move forward.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments on Dr. Prince's presentation? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Dr. Jones?
Yes, thank you, sir. Next item is a final update on the school calendar. This is, I believe, update number four from Dr. Mahundra. It has additional information to share with the board and a final recommendation for the board's consideration at a, at the January meeting, I believe. Dr. Mahundra?
Thank you, Dr. Jones. You'll find, in addition to this presentation, also two of the draft calendars that were provided to constituents as we're going through this final step of the process. Some new information since our last update, we did complete a final survey. You'll see the graphics on this page, our graphics that were provided within the text of the survey. This is information that you all have received as part of school board presentations, but often our constituents may not have access or don't see that, so I wanted to make sure that they had access to this information as they were completing the survey. The school messenger was the form that we used or the process that we used to send the survey. We sent it three different times, division-wide, to our division-wide distribution list. It also included the two drafts that you all have in your school board documents today and this information that was provided as part of the survey. I did receive, in addition to the direct result of the survey, 12 emails from families that had, wanted to provide additional information that was not part of the survey. The survey was a very cut-and-dry, two-question survey. As far as results of the survey, you can see that we had a strong participation. Our initial survey that we did earlier this year had 1,564 participants, and this, at this time, we had 21, or 2,131 survey responses. Of those responses, 79% of those were employees, and 21% were parents, and that looks like it might be reversed there, so I apologize for that. As far as the overall results, which is the key information, again, the question was posed after a review of the major considerations, the benefits of both start dates, the two draft calendars that they received in the email, and the differences that were outlined within the presentation that they received, I recommend to the school board. And the results were in this chart in orange. For a pre-Labor Day start, parents, 44% of them wanted a pre-Labor Day start, 63% of employees, and overall, 48% wanted a pre-Labor Day start. For the post-Labor Day start, 55% of the parents, 36% of employees, and 51.8% overall. Really seeing fairly equitable distribution overall between adding together parents and employees, and really a two-to-one preference for the pre-Labor Day start for employees. Based on all of this information, staff recommended, recommends adoption of Calendar B, which is the pre-Labor Day start. Some of the items to be considered are the instructional benefits that we anticipate for staff and students, that the committee, who did an extensive review and had very open discussion and dialogue about the benefits of both calendars, a pre-Labor Day and a post-Labor Day, that committee came out with 74% of them in favor of the pre-Labor Day start, that the initial survey and the final survey of stakeholders showed a fairly even split for each calendar, and that this year will be the least impacted for summer vacation by moving to a two-year, two-week early start. These calendars will be presented again at the January school board meeting for you all to vote on final adoption.
All right, questions or comments for Dr. Mahundra? I know we've spent quite a bit of time talking about this issue. We've asked you to gather a lot of data for us. You've now produced the final report. We appreciate that. Any comments or questions?
Did we see the email follow-ups, or did I miss that part?
I just noted that we had 12 email follow-ups from families. I can tell you the general discuss, the items, sure. There were, was comments related to heat and the buses, the discussion around Chesterfield's move to a full week for Thanksgiving that was never on the table for either of our calendars, but that was a proposed request from one of the respondents. More comments about impact on vacations, a comment about college move-in dates and how that might be affected if we start two weeks early, though on the flip side, we would consider that maybe college move-out dates may be impacted on the, on the tail end of the calendar. Question about what the impact would be on graduation at the high school and how that would be determined, and a comment from a parent that believed that we did not have accurate numbers because social media showed something very different. So those were the general comments and the emails that I received.
Thank you.
Because social media showed something different? Can you?
Sure, there, I think there was something in some groups on social media where people were commenting, and if they counted up comments that were positive and negative on those social media sites, it was much more to a negative side.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. All right, any other questions or comments?
Do we?
Mr. Cull?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. This is a, this is a vote that we'll take, regardless of which way we take it, some people will be happy with us, and I think it's incumbent on us to exercise some leadership and do what we think is best for our students, and each one of us has to decide how that is. My concern is that even though Chesterfield has delayed their vote, delayed their decision, and so have the other two big school divisions around us, that eventually this is going to probably happen. I, I, I can't predict, but I would assume that as those other bigger divisions have a chance to do what we've just done, that eventually this is, there is going to be migration towards a pre-Labor Day start. And, you know, so regardless of whether we make this decision in January of this year for the upcoming school year, you know, some of the arguments about aligning ourselves with other school divisions, if they change, they're going to go away, you know, if they do change over the next few years. So like I say, like we said before, look west of us, everybody's starting pre-Labor Day. You look east of us, everybody's starting post-Labor Day. So, you know, a lot of good minds thinking about this in a lot of places, and a lot of people have different opinions, so, you know, I'm looking forward to voting on this and getting it out there so that our parents will know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cull. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Dr. Mahundra, and appreciate the work of your committee in bringing all this information to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item that we have is, as part of our yearly or regular work, is to benchmark ourselves against other divisions and see how our benefits compare to other divisions. The Human Resources Department, led by Dr. Parker, has some new information as we roll into budget season about health insurance benefit study, where we've tried to do a apples-to-apples comparison with some of our neighbors on how our health insurance for our employees stacks up with other school divisions. So we'd like to share that with you this evening.
Thank you. As Dr. Jones mentioned, the Human Resources Office has completed a health insurance comparison study to provide benchmarking data for Goal Two of our strategic plan. We compared our Powhatan Local Choice Key 500 Health Plan for employees only and the family plan, and we benchmarked that against eight other surrounding school divisions who also offer the exact same plan, the Key 500. And our goal is to be at or near the median ranking. For background information, we currently have 428 full-time employees who participate or opt-in to our health insurance benefits coverage. Those plans are the Key 250, the Key 500, and the High Deductible, and they're outlined there with the enrollment and the percentage to our entire 615 full-time employees. The school divisions that we compared against are listed. You might note that these are different than our typical benchmarking school divisions that we might look at, some of our surrounding school divisions that touch us, but we wanted to compare, as Dr. Jones said, apples-to-apples, those that offer the Key 500 through the local choice plans. So those are the school divisions that were chosen. So those are the school divisions that were chosen. The first-
If I could interrupt a second, Dr. Parker, if you go back to that previous slide. We looked at some of the divisions we typically compare ourselves to and looked at their plans. And what we found is that they were so different that it was very difficult to compare. So that's why we started out that way and decided that it was a much more valid comparison to look at just divisions that offer the Key 500. And we do have some good comparison groups, not just our neighbors, Amelia, Prince Edward, you know, close enough to a neighbor, but also Louisa, which is about a similar sonics division as ours, Caroline as well. So we felt like we had enough of a comparison stake. And in looking at the other divisions, it just, it wouldn't have been worthwhile to compare because the plans are so, so different.
You would have different information with deductibles. And while you could look at what the amount is or the premium that the employee is paying, there would be differences within each plan from coverage amounts to co-pays and so forth. So within the first comparison group of Employee Only on the Key 500, the school divisions that we benchmarked against are in that first column. The plan for the Key 500 is listed. You'll notice that there is an asterisk next to Amelia and Louisa. That's indicated or specified because those school divisions offer the Key 500 as their high, their highest-level plan, where the other school divisions, this is the mid-grade plan. The total premium is then listed next in the third column, which is driven by the claims to the division. The rank based on just straight total health and premium, health premium is next. The next column is the employee contribution, the amount that the employee pays. And then the rank that's highlighted in yellow, that was what we were ranking as the most important, which is the percentage of the total health premium that the employee pays. And you can see that Powhatan is ranked fourth with the employee paying 11% toward the total premium. The employer contribution is next. And then the ranking, again, it's mirrored because it's the reverse of the total amount that the employer is paying toward, percent toward the total premium.
So, excuse me, Dr. Parker, Mr. Chairman. So let's look at Goochlin. How can they afford to, their employees only contribute $20?
I don't know that Dr. Parker can answer the question. I think it's a valid question, but I think it's just a matter of budget priorities, not just-
So they're probably putting in more? Is that what you think than the, okay.
Correct. Their, their school division is paying 96% of the total premium.
Which, oh, okay. In the last column is where that would be in the parentheses? Okay. Thank you.
That's a huge perk for their employees. I mean, they actually advertise that as a, to draw employees.
Mr. Chairman, is that reflected in the participation rate for Goochlin versus other schools?
I could get their participation rate, but I don't have that.
Is it could be a benefit for a lot of people or it could be a benefit for a small number?
Right.
Correct. Okay. So to summarize this, the first chart, that was, again, the Employee Only Plan of the Key 500. Oh, go ahead.
Could I take you back to the previous slide for just a moment?
Sure.
So these are similar plans?
They are the exact same plans. They're all Key 500 offered through the local choice.
So why, so tell me more about why the cost is different. And what I'm asking you is in terms of the cost of the premium, right? The employee contribution plus the employer contribution is a different price per district. How is that, is that a negotiated price?
The premium is going to be driven by the claims of the school division, the employees that opt into the health insurance. So some years, the premium may go down, some years it may go up based on health needs of the employers opting into the plan.
Okay. All right. I understand.
Okay. So the Powhatan is ranked below the median for our total premiums. So that speaks to the health of our employees. We are ranked four out of eight, which is at the median for our employee contribution amount. And that's within the median ranking. The next slide is for the Key 500 Advantage Comparison using our Family Plan. Again, it's important to remember the slide on the participation, the amount opting into that plan. Again, this is set up the same way. You have the school divisions in the first column, the plan. Again, noting Amelia and Louisa that use that as their highest-tier plan. The others, this is all the middle plan as we use it. The total health premiums for a Family Plan are listed, and that's ranked. The employee contribution, what's in blue, that is what our employees pay for family, $885. The ranking is then highlighted in yellow, where we rank against those competitors based on the percent that the employee pays to the total premium at 49.66%. And then what we, as a school division, pick up at just over 50%. Based on this information, our, again, our premiums are below the median level. We rank seven out of the eight school divisions when comparing the employee and the employer contribution amount. And we are below the median ranking for the Family Plan. This is a very basic study. We did want to keep it simple in terms of looking at comparing the exact same product and where we rank against those other school divisions, but very, still very similar school divisions in our surrounding area.
Mark, can you go back to the previous slide?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kunkka.
And this got to go to Dr. Jones. Is this the first time we've looked at this specific comparison? I don't remember seeing the, you know, the ranking of the plans relative to other counties before this year.
I think this is the first time that we've taken them.
And now seeing this, my follow-up to that is, wow.
Yep.
Because when, you know, if our goal is to be average, here's a specific instance where we're falling behind with the Family Plans.
That would be accurate. And I think this really came about because we looked to hire a couple teachers this year coming from other school divisions who accepted jobs with us and then turned them down once they took a closer look at the benefits because it would be such a financial hit to them, and they were specifically looking at Family Plans. So it certainly opened our eyes and had us asking some questions, and we began looking at it a little more closely. Dr. Parker and her department did a much more extensive survey, but quite frankly, it was so much information and it was so hard to compare that information that we wanted to boil it down to look just at this.
And it told us really the same as what this is. We are at the median ranking. Again, not really looking specifically at co-pays and what those options allow for, but just in terms of cost to employee, if that would be the only thing the employee would be looking at. Our employee plan is very in line at the median level, but our Family Plan is at the lower level as it is in this, which is much easier to understand.
And I'll add this information. You know, we've looked specifically about how we compare with the county, and our goal has been to get to cut the gap between the counties. So we have been putting more money into the 500 Plan at both the single and the family level. It doesn't look like we've done much to cut that gap when we compare ourselves to other divisions. The other thing I would point out, and Dr. Parker mentioned this, is this is 8%, less than 8% of our employees that are taking advantage of this plan. Not that it's not important to those 8% of our employees, but this board has had conversations before about, we have a limited number of resources. Do we put that money towards raises for employees so that every employee gets a raise? Or do we look at targeting it towards those employees that take advantage of certain benefits that we have?
All right. So, Dr. Parker, let me ask you a couple of questions. How many districts in Virginia use this plan or a comparable plan, this plan?
The local choice?
Specifically, yes.
I don't have an exact number, but I could speak with our, with David Rowe and get that for you.
I think that would be good, good to know. And I know that this is an analysis of a lot of data that you got back. So in talking about comparators, and I don't, certainly don't need to know specific individuals, but we have lost staff members to these counties, in any of these counties?
No, we tried to-
No, I understand, but I'm asking specifically, in order to say that this is a comparator and this is really somebody who we could potentially lose a staff member to in an analysis of benefits and trying to make sure that we're comparable to them, these are, in fact, employers that we have lost staff members to.
I don't-
One of them is that we were not able to hire an employee from them that wanted to come to us. And because of the difference in the premiums.
Okay. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I'll cut you off.
So I don't have, like, a specific number of, like, a resignation of somebody saying that they are leaving because of the health insurance. But in terms of hiring someone, we haven't been able to because the employee has said it's-
There were two specific employees.
That's the question I'm asking you.
Correct.
So have we either been unable to hire somebody because of this comparison of benefits? Or have we lost an employee who has cited the benefit gap as a reason for leaving employment? What I'm really trying to get to is, in fact, are these the best comparators for us to be looking at? Because we really need to make sure that what we're looking at are people that are, that are competitors. They're people who are going to take staff members from us or we're unable to hire from. And speaking as an individual, I understand that there are differences in the plans, but I would really want to look at the, how it impacts our employment and our retention. And we keep staff members. Are we able to hire staff members? Are we vulnerable to losing staff members to competitors? And if they've got another plan, I would be interested to know, how good is their plan? What are the differences and why? This is good data, but I guess I'm just asking us for a little bit more, if it's possible. And that may be a big ask that I just made.
No, our department did that as well because we also believe the exact same as what you're saying, that it is important for us to know our Chesterfield, our Henrico's. But Goochlin specifically is one that teachers, in trying to hire, have referenced that our benefits, which are the exact same product, are more expensive for them to opt into.
We had one teacher from Goochlin that we tried to hire this year that turned us down because of the health insurance. We had one teacher that we were going to hire from Henrico. They have a different plan for us, but when that teacher compared the plan they would have taken with us to the plan from Henrico, there was $300-plus difference in monthly premiums they would have had to pay.
Yeah, there's a, there's a big difference in this comparison on the Family Plan. The last one you showed us, and those are pre, are they, they're pre-tax dollars for the employees? Dr. Parker?
Yes.
I would assume they are, yeah. So even with it being pre-tax dollars, that's still a big difference on the employee contribution between our neighbor to the north and us.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Kunkka.
I'm not going to have a lot of opportunity to comment on this moving forward, so I'm going to give you everything I've got tonight. The, the cost of the plan, for the Family Plan, it's the chicken and the egg syndrome. If you lower the cost of the plan, you're going to get more participation, you know. So that's a given. The question is how much? But, and I can't speak for everything that's happening in the private sector, but you've got to compare for families with two working spouses, what is available in the private sector and weigh it against the school system, and then hopefully the person's going to take the best option. And what I've seen in the last year is implementation of a penalty. If you have a working spouse that has a plan available and you choose to put them on your plan, you will pay a penalty because that spouse had their own plan available to them. So I was a victim of that occurring this year. So at the current time, my wife is on the Key Advantage 500 Plan for herself. I'm maintaining the children and myself on my company's plan. So that's, that's one penalty. Another penalty that's being implemented is smoking and vaping. If you smoke or vape, you're going to pay an additional premium for those. I don't know how they prove you do or don't, but, you know, they're going to get into your private life or your doctor's records and find that out. Also, paying a penalty, I'm going to call it a penalty, but it is a different premium based on salary. It's a tiered, tiered premium system that's been implemented in my industry where, you know, if you make A to B, this is your premium. If you make B to C, your premium steps up and so on. So there's four different payment tiers based on your compensation. So all of these factors are going to weigh into a person's decision on whether or not they're going to take a Family Plan out of the school system. But I'm primarily concerned with the single-parent teachers who don't have an option to have another working spouse to insure their family. So, you know, that's the, that's the biggest hurdle to overcome is the difference in cost from, from one person, which is $78. And then if they have two kids, that goes up to $885. You know, that, it's just crazy. So I'm going to ask the board, moving forward, to keep all of those factors in mind when they evaluate these premiums for the, for the families.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Parker, did you want to respond at all to that or Dr. Jones?
That's conversations that we've had with new hires that are single mothers that do have two children, who that is what they have to do, and that is a large amount for a teacher's salary, someone with a master's degree to be able to do, to provide health insurance for their children. Even on the high deductible plan, it's still costly.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Cole.
The bottom line is, for people that are looking at jobs, is they don't really look specifically at your plan. They look with that plan is going to cost them a lot of money. So even though Henrico, Chesterfield, and Richmond have different plans, what does a single employee pay, and what is, what is an employee that wants to cover their family? That's, that's what's driving, you know, that's what they look at by and large. So even though the plans are different, it's a premium that really is, I think, a deal breaker for most, for most people. And so, you know, and like Mr. Walters said, if we just had those premium comparisons from those other divisions we normally compare ourselves to.
Sure.
That might be helpful also. And it is a small number of employees, and we have to balance that out and move into the budget. And, but I think it's good information for us to know, and it's good to make a lot of other things, the data we have that we can use in our decision-making. I think it's great that we've done this for the first time.
We will, we'll poll our 12 or 13 comparison districts that we normally use. We've already got that data, but again, it was kind of messy. But we'll get that information to you and try to put it in a way that's easily understood for the board.
Could we include the county with that?
Powhatan County? Oh, yes, sir.
Sure.
We have that also.
Happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Parker? Thank you very much. Appreciate you putting this together. All right. All right. Next item on our agenda is closed session. Mrs. Emel, could I ask you to read the certificate, please, and make the required motion?
Sure. I make a motion to go into closed session. I have, I read for, it's, I'm sorry.
It's all right. You'll just read.
Right. And then when we come back.
That's your recommendation for the motion.
Right, right. Okay. I recommend to make a motion tender into closed session pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A1 to discuss the employment, resignation, and leave of specific employees pursuant to Code 2.2-3711A2 and A4 to discuss expulsion and school placement of specific students.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion is second to enter into closed session. All in favor, please respond with aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We are in closed session. Thank you.